Members, if you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Here.
Arnz?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Weeblehouse?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Claussen?
Here.
Hildebrand?
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'd move for consideration of the consent agenda.
Motion in second, and I should note here that this meeting is also accessible to the public via Zoom or via phone, and any participants using those venues can participate on Zoom by using the raise hand icon, or if you're on the phone, by pressing star nine, requesting to speak, and that'll put you in the queue, and you'll be able to speak that way. That said, if no discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move.
Motion in second, if no discussion, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number 23 on the council agenda under special presentations. As many may know, the city of Norfolk enacted a mask requirement related to the COVID pandemic in late November, and it was, as that policy was established, it is set to expire tonight at 11:59 PM, and so this is a proclamation regarding that and regarding the state of public safety in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas COVID-19 is a severe acute respiratory illness that can spread through small droplets when individuals breathe out, talk, cough, or sneeze, and COVID-19 continues to be present in the city of Norfolk and Madison County, and it is important to protect the residents, visitors, students, and employees in the city of Norfolk from the spread of COVID-19, and the city of Norfolk's mask requirement will expire on February 16th at 11:59 PM, and individual businesses and government offices or buildings may choose to continue their mask requirements as deemed necessary by their respective organizations. And the World Health Organization has determined that wearing face shields, coverings, or cloth face masks has proven to be an effective means to curb the spread of the COVID-19 virus among persons in public settings. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, on behalf of our citizens, in an effort to continue curtailing the spread of COVID-19 and its impact on our community, do hereby encourage residents and visitors to follow all public health recommendations and guidelines related to COVID-19, including the use of face shields, coverings, or cloth face masks in public and private areas when social distancing is not possible or practical. So again, our city mask requirement will expire tonight at 11:59, and I think our citizens answered the call well to be very proactive in complying with the requirement, also being proactive about maintaining their health and the health of those around us from going to one of the highest rates among counties in late November to one of the lowest rates among top 10 counties today. I think we've had good outcomes, and we'd like to see that continue, but the mask requirement will expire tonight. With that, we move to our regular agenda, item number 24, and I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5717, moving the land use matrix from chapter 27, article 14, section 27 dash 401 of the city code to chapter 27, article 15, section 27 dash 601 of the code, to consider amendment of the city code land use matrix to allow restaurants drive-in and drive-through as conditional uses in zoning District C2 and C2A. As a note, ordinance number 5717 passed on first reading only at the February 1st council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5717 on second reading.
Second.
Motion in second, and just as a refresher, background on this, Andy Colvin, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, as the title of this ordinance indicates, and as we discussed last time, this is simply amending the land use matrix to allow drive-in and a drive-through for restaurants in our downtown district as well as our special business district, which would be in the area of where this building is right now. So again, it's a conditional use, so an individual who would want to do this would have to apply for that permit, work with staff, and that is then presented to the planning commission for approval as a conditional use, and that the planning commission can grant it or not grant it, or grant it with certain conditions with that conditional use permit. So I guess with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. There's been little to no discussion of this item since the last time the council considered this amendment, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you have heard any feedback.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions, Council?
When they do this, are they going to have to take into consideration, or are they going to take into consideration, the amount of room they have to get in and out of the place and how they're going to affect the traffic?
The nice part about this as a conditional use is this does come to staff, and typically is as part of a pre-planning meeting, we would normally see a project like this, so then that's when our engineering department and our building officials are involved in that process through the planning, and if there are issues with that in traffic, I would expect those to be resolved prior to going to planning commission.
Somebody wanting to drive through, they'd have to have a study down to see if it's being more of an obligation?
I wouldn't say an official study, but they would have to present a plan for that, and then our staff would look at that to determine if we feel it would impact traffic through that, and if it's not appropriate in a certain area or in a certain parcel, our recommendation would be to not allow that, or allow it with conditions.
Andy, would they be able to use, such as some restaurants, be able to use the public alleys on the backside of Norfolk Avenue for the drive-through window?
Just like using other public right-of-way, that could very well happen, but then that would have to have some type of approval or arrangement with the city if that's going to be something permanent, so we would have to be involved in that, and that's a question perhaps Steve can help address from an engineering standpoint in public works, but every time you do want to use and occupy the city right-of-way, it is something that has to go through our process.
I think the benefit here is it would still ultimately, if that owner wanted to have it come in front of city council, let's say if planning commission voted it down, right? They could, and it's still our vote whether we want to allow that condition or not.
That's correct.
They can correct later.
Yep, anyone can appeal the decision to the planning commission, and it would go to the city council.
So again, just to be clear, under this policy, this wouldn't be blanket approval for any kind of drive-in or drive-through in the downtown district, it would be a case-by-case determination among the planning commission and perhaps the council, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any other discussion, Council? Hearing none, short title, please.
In order in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to move the land use matrix from chapter 27, article 14, section 27 dash 401 of the official city code to chapter 27, article 15, section 27 dash 601 of the code, to amend the land use matrix to allow restaurants drive-in and drive-through as conditional uses in zoning District C2 and C2A, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
No.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Merrill, Weeblehouse, Muren, Jackson, and Claussen. Voting in opposition, Hildebrand. Ordinance number 5717 carries on second reading.
Okay, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on third reading since it's a no discussion period for third reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on third reading. No discussion on that, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Merrill, Weeblehouse, Muren, Jackson, and Claussen. Voting in opposition, Hildebrand. Ordinance number 5717 carries on third reading.
Okay, item 25, would look for a motion to consider approval of the plans, specifications, and engineer's estimate on file in the city offices for concrete improvements 2021-1 project and authorization for the city clerk to advertise for bits.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion in second, and Steve Ramus, our public works director, could you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor and Council, this is a fairly substantial concrete improvement project for us, identifies several streets within the community, and I'll just review those. Eighteenth Street from Bel Air Road to the north property line of Prospect Hill Cemetery, Hillview Drive from Sheridan Drive to approximately 350 feet south of College View Drive, Woodcrest Street from Maple Avenue to Sycamore, and Taylor Avenue from 25th Street to Market Lane. This would be actually incorporate two years, our 2021 and 2022 construction dollars for concrete street repair. One of them, that the Woodcrest on the east side of town, we've actually pulled back a little bit on our repair, this would be part of a mill and overlay project, so we would come in and do the concrete repair, and then do a one-inch mill probably on it with a two-inch overlay, asphalt overlay on that as part of our 2021 overlay projects. But engineer's estimate on this is about one million, just to hear one million.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions? I'm glad we were able to move this up because these, I hear about these streets quite often, I think, I think we all do, so it'll be nice to get those addressed, and I don't think we were necessarily planning to be able to do that, but through some creative budgeting and designating of resources, we've been able to accelerate some of these concrete improvement projects, which we're always trying to do more.
Will they be simultaneous, or is there an order in which these repairs, and do you have a start date?
They would not be simultaneous. We'd work with the contractor in terms of start dates, some of them are more school critical, so we'd work with those to be sure those are done ahead of some of the other ones, some of the more neighborhood residential ones, but as of right now, you know, that's about as best I have.
We have an estimated start time at all?
Estimated start time, we'd probably advertise this right around the first of March, board bid, first of April, contractor probably needs about 30 days to start up, so I'd say first of May, or sooner.
Thank you. Steve, do you have any plans for Michigan from 13th to like Wood or Glen?
We do have plans there from 13th, you know, in general, we'll just say from 13th over to 7th, and that includes reconstruction on 8th Street as well from Michigan South to Omaha, so those two projects are tied together, we could probably separate them and look at one over the other. We're going to use the council as part of the budget process identified a kind of an extra $175,000 for us on an annual basis as part of our city highway allocation, so we want to advance the design on that, it's currently, there's a drainage study going on there, there's some complicated drainage in there that we need to figure out exactly what to do, it's the drainage that's caused them to deteriorate to the point they are, so we're, should have some solutions on that here towards the end of March, early April, and then we'll want to advance design on those, and we'll probably use that 175 to bond the project and pay for the reconstruction.
I guess my thought was, if you had some, when the freeze thaw happens, 13th to go about Wood, that's going to be pretty rough in there, if there's some plans to, do some temporary at least till all the studies are done, and...
We can, I can certainly explore that, I'm not aware of that, so I can, I'll visit with our street staff and take a look at that and see if there's something we can't do. We do have a big mill and overlay project coming in, so maybe we could temporarily do a two-inch overlay on it. Right now, I think, I don't know which one's kind of scheduled first, Michigan or 8th, but they're kind of separated, I think, one year, but they're all, they're both out there probably six, seven years, and so I know it's not going to get that far, and again, I appreciate you guys identifying that extra money for us in the chaff to move those two projects forward.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions, Council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item 26, I would look for a motion to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Norfolk Region 11 Emergency Management Agency and the Nebraska Regional Interoperability Network, NRI, allowing the placement of Nebraska Regional Interoperable Network Equipment on the City of Norfolk Communications Tower.
So move, Your Honor. Second.
Motion and a second, and for some background on this, Shane Widener, our public safety director. Shane?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a MOU that's been in process for some time now, we were, N-RIN, I'll just shorten it up, Mayor, N-RIN has been working on this project for a number of years across the state of Nebraska, and what this, what this system does is it's a data transfer system, microwave base that is covering the whole state of Nebraska, so we're in partnership amongst all the other communities and counties in the state. Northeast Nebraska is the last section to go, so they are here in northeast Nebraska installing this equipment, so as part of our agreement here in memorandum's understanding, we've been waiting for our tower placement to be done, and then all of our legacy equipment to be placed on there along with our new 800 megahertz system, which is all done, as of today, we moved our legacy equipment over today, and it's operational, so now N-RIN can come to Norfolk as they progress in northeast Nebraska and hang their microwave equipment on our tower, which then links to a series of towers across the state of Nebraska, and this is used for data transfer for public safety information, anything from 911 backup system to video arrangements to transferring data, for anything related to public safety, it's only for public safety and it's very protected infrastructure, so we're happy to be a link in the chain, and be happy to answer any questions you might have about N-RIN.
Shane, once the N-RIN equipment is put up on there, is there going to be any other, I mean, what's on there now, is there going to be additional, like, do we have some rental customers that will be on there?
Potentially.
From the water tower?
Potentially, we may. We do have some private vendors that are on our water tower currently, we just sent the letter out today, in fact, and gave them their six-month notice that their lease is expiring as part of our agreement with all those vendors, there's four of them actually on there, so give them opportunity to transfer over to the new tower if they choose. We also are looking at bringing on a tower management company to help us do the tower management, or those resources that could be placed on that public safety or the City of Norfolk's tower. That's the best approach staff feels to handle the management of that tower, if and when we would place independent or private companies on that for communication purposes only. We're pretty protective of that tower for obvious reasons, it's our, it's our complete backbone for the City of Norfolk's radio transmissions, and it links in with the SRS, the statewide system, so we will be protective about that, but if there's opportunity to place private vendors on there without interference, we are looking to do that as well. No promises, but we're definitely going to explore that.
And it's engineered to handle that if needed?
Correct, yeah, every time a new, just like we did for the water tower, even more so with the new tower, every time a new vendor would go on there, we'd do a structural analysis, or the company would have to do a structural analysis, and then part of our tower management services, there'll be, that will be confirmed, and then we'll strike the negotiation and the agreement, and they'd be able to place their equipment on there.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion, Council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item 26, I would look for a motion to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Norfolk Region 11 Emergency Management Agency and the Nebraska Regional Interoperability Network, NRI, allowing the placement of Nebraska Regional Interoperable Network Equipment on the City of Norfolk Communications Tower.
So move, Your Honor. Second.
Motion and a second, and for some background on this, Shane Widener, our public safety director. Shane?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a MOU that's been in process for some time now, we were, N-RIN, I'll just shorten it up, Mayor, N-RIN has been working on this project for a number of years across the state of Nebraska, and what this, what this system does is it's a data transfer system, microwave base that is covering the whole state of Nebraska, so we're in partnership amongst all the other communities and counties in the state. Northeast Nebraska is the last section to go, so they are here in northeast Nebraska installing this equipment, so as part of our agreement here in memorandum's understanding, we've been waiting for our tower placement to be done, and then all of our legacy equipment to be placed on there along with our new 800 megahertz system, which is all done, as of today, we moved our legacy equipment over today, and it's operational, so now N-RIN can come to Norfolk as they progress in northeast Nebraska and hang their microwave equipment on our tower, which then links to a series of towers across the state of Nebraska, and this is used for data transfer for public safety information, anything from 911 backup system to video arrangements to transferring data, for anything related to public safety, it's only for public safety and it's very protected infrastructure, so we're happy to be a link in the chain, and be happy to answer any questions you might have about N-RIN.
Shane, once the N-RIN equipment is put up on there, is there going to be any other, I mean, what's on there now, is there going to be additional, like, do we have some rental customers that will be on there?
Potentially.
From the water tower?
Potentially, we may. We do have some private vendors that are on our water tower currently, we just sent the letter out today, in fact, and gave them their six-month notice that their lease is expiring as part of our agreement with all those vendors, there's four of them actually on there, so give them opportunity to transfer over to the new tower if they choose. We also are looking at bringing on a tower management company to help us do the tower management, or those resources that could be placed on that public safety or the City of Norfolk's tower. That's the best approach staff feels to handle the management of that tower, if and when we would place independent or private companies on that for communication purposes only. We're pretty protective of that tower for obvious reasons, it's our, it's our complete backbone for the City of Norfolk's radio transmissions, and it links in with the SRS, the statewide system, so we will be protective about that, but if there's opportunity to place private vendors on there without interference, we are looking to do that as well. No promises, but we're definitely going to explore that.
And it's engineered to handle that if needed?
Correct, yeah, every time a new, just like we did for the water tower, even more so with the new tower, every time a new vendor would go on there, we'd do a structural analysis, or the company would have to do a structural analysis, and then part of our tower management services, there'll be, that will be confirmed, and then we'll strike the negotiation and the agreement, and they'd be able to place their equipment on there.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion, Council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item 28, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Rutledge Construction Incorporated of Tilden, Nebraska for the South Highway 81 Water Main Extension Project for an amount of $695,287.30.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion in second, and Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor and Council, this would be the construction contract for the South Highway 81 Water Extension. This will take water from just south of the river on the east side, we did that extension here a couple of years ago, it would take that extension all the way down to Sherwood on the east side, and it would connect across over to the airport at Sherwood as well. On North Airport Road, it also extends, would be extended west along, over to North Airport Road, and then it would go north along that frontage road for a little ways. Engineer's estimate on the project was 920,000, we had three bids on the project, low bid was 895,287, high bid was one, just over 1.2 million, so we had, we had, you know, three bidders, good bids, and underestimated, so we're recommending award to Rutledge Construction.
What did you say the low bid was again?
Low bid is Rutledge at 695,287.
I thought you had said eight, that's why I was asking. Okay.
Any questions, comments on this? Another large utility expansion project that will help better serve residents and businesses in that area of town, and hopefully promote new economic growth along that corridor as well. Any, go ahead.
I've got one quick question, sorry. Along with this water extension, will that have fire capabilities and provide water out there?
Correct, yep, there would be hydrants to provide fire service flow to those businesses.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Just one question, am I right, is this the one that we had some discussion on whether that would interrupt the service road for the side along the highway?
We did, yes, there was.
And it would not interrupt that, am I thinking right?
Correct, on the east side or the west side, which one are you going to talk about?
Be the east side.
On the east side, it's back up along, I don't know, Dennis, it's back up along the backside of the ditch, but it's not out in the front, I know when we did the sewer project, I think there was a lot of disruption in there to that service road for those businesses, we kept it, it'll be more isolated to the eastern edge of the ditch.
Sure. Thanks, Steve.
Would not interrupt that, am I thinking right?
Correct, on the east side or the west side, which one are you going to talk about?
Be the east side.
On the east side, it's back up along, I don't know, Dennis? It's back up along the backside of the ditch. But it's not out in the front. I know when we did the sewer project, I think there was a lot of disruption in there to that service road for those businesses. We kept it, it'll be more isolated to the eastern edge of the ditch.
Sure. Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Clausen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item 29, I would look for a motion to consider approval of amendment number one, final design to the engineering contract with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for the Norfolk First Street Bridge Project for an amount not to exceed $303,209.28.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in second, and again, Steve Ramus, our Public Works Director, for some background on this project, please.
Mayor and council members, this would be the final design contract for the replacement of the First Street Bridge, as well as some remaining work on the Roundabout at Brash and First, and some large drainage, storm sewer drainage that comes off Brash and needs to be extended over to the river there to the east. I've shared my experience and wanted to point to some information to yourselves and to the public with regard to the project, a little bit on the history of the project. It's, if I want to kind of walk through that here. With regard to the First Street Bridge replacement, this is, this is all tied into the river restoration as well. Thank you, Danny. Mayor and council, hope you can hear me better now as well as those that are listening online. So I've taken you here to our project website within the city website. And we're looking at the First Street Bridge and Roundabout Project. A little bit of history here on the bridge. This bridge was originally constructed in 1935 and reconstructed in 1983. The images that are on the website, you can click on and they'll enlarge. I won't do that as a function of the presentation here. But you can see that there are currently four, it's a four-barrel box culvert with a structural slab bridge. Over the top of it, it's got sidewalks as well as barrier rail on the sides. We would be replacing that with a single, 60-foot single-span structure, which is shown below. That structure, that single-span then allows us to get a 10-foot sidewalk on the north side that would go under First Street, as well as a five-foot sidewalk on the south side of the river that would also go under First Street. The concept there is kind of shown in that next image below where you see people walking on a trail underneath the bridge carrying their kayaks. And so that's, that's the concept here that we're, the reason that we're replacing that bridge is just to make that safer with this river project for the increased river activity in the area. The Roundabout portion of the project, the Roundabout at First and Brash was developed as part of the Brash Avenue Reconstruction Project. There's some images down there below that, and I'll go to those here in a second. But during the bidding process, kind of final design process on Brash, the project was pushing up against budget. And so we made a decision not to finalize the Roundabout design and build that as a function of that project because we knew the river project was coming and we were going to be needing to take out the First Street Bridge. So rather than impact the community two times with a major closure there on First, we really thought it made more sense to combine those two projects into one and do a closure at one time and build them both. Subsequent then to building Brash out, there's also, I guess I'd point out, there's also this large storm sewer system that sits under First Street right there at Brash. And that needs to be extended east and terminate into the river. So a couple of reasons there for holding on to that until we did First Street Bridge and finalized kind of the design of the river reconstruction project. Our timeline on here is, we had approval from council back in April 6th to move forward with the design of the Roundabout. Preliminary design was completed in the summer of 2020. Final design would be completed towards the end of summer of 2021. And then we would construct January of 2022 through July of 2022. That six, seven-month window there would be, we'd reconstruct both the bridge and construct the Roundabout. Project funding for both of those would be our city highway allocation funds. And what we have down here, again, this is conceptual imagery in terms of what we've done to date is we've sized the Roundabout. We've looked at three-legged versus four-legged Roundabout. Just a matter of final design, kind of positioning that within the intersection and positioning it east-west as well as north-south. There's some three-legged options, there's four-legged options. What I would point out here, there's, there's a couple images here that relate to or start to show some concept for redevelopment of the Alco site. There's a colored pencil sketch in there as well as a digital image. Within the colored pencil sketch, you'll see that the old railroad trestle bridge has been pushed to the south and now connects across the river kind of between First Street and the railroad tracks. You'll see there, it's got the First Street Bridge replaced with the trails going underneath, the pedestrian bridge on the east side of First Street. You can see some concept here of the redevelopment of the river, the falls, the trails down along the river. And to the south, you can see that the existing Alco building is gone. And that site is under some sort of redevelopment. What this is not showing is this is not depicting any sort of a Roundabout there at Brash and First. And so one of the things we would do going forward is to update this image to show that. Going back, there's another, here's the digital image again, starting to show some concept for the redevelopment there of the Alco site. This is looking north up First Street, Roundabout there at Brash, the river to the north. The four-legged Roundabout, this is a three-legged Roundabout concept with access into that Alco site. That's an option. The Roundabout would function better if it was actually designed as a fourth leg to the Roundabout that actually entered that site. So these are some concepts. Again, what's been done to date is we've sized the Roundabout. We just need to position it north-south, east-west. At the time that we positioned this, we weren't as sure of what might, the future was for that redevelopment there to the east. You know, it's that concept or the fact that that is most likely going to be going into some redevelopment here in the next year or two is starting to become a reality. So again, final design on this would be to position it north-south, east-west, fix the footprint, identify the right-of-way that we would need to look at to the east and to the west. Some other stuff that's on the website here, there's a couple different traffic simulation models. I will go ahead and just kind of click on one so that you can see that run. These were done, the traffic data was collected during the school period in the morning and during the school pickup period in the afternoon. Those are the peak traffic movements for the community in this corridor. We also did model a rail, a train going through First Street and the backup of traffic that that would create. And the traffic does not get down to Brash. Again, we have that, we could load that onto the site as well so that that's available for public to see. So that's the contract here. The contract is for 303,209.28. That does the final design for the bridge, final design for the Roundabout, and final design for that large storm sewer system. In addition, there's about 55,000 in this contract that is wetland mitigation for the, all along the river, probably within about a foot or two of the bank, is a type of wetland that we'll need to mitigate. And so we relocate it, and then we do a five-year monitoring and reporting period. And the cost for that is in here.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So there's a big project altogether with all the different moving parts included. Just as a refresher, since, you know, this goes to final design on the bridge replacement, maybe we, we talk about why that's necessary. Not only is this bridge coming to the end of its useful life, I think we're at this point four to five years out on its shelf life before it becomes classified as deficient, but to make room for the plans for river restoration, which essentially mechanically are removing the spillway under the First Street Bridge to make the river safe for recreation and passable for, for users, river recreationists. But in conjunction, I guess to answer questions as to why package these different components together? Why is the bridge replacement and the Roundabout coming along together in final design?
Well, they're coming, we put them together, A is just to minimize the impact to the, to the public as we go into construction on there. We're pretty confident we can get this done in seven months. So we'd take the bridge out, probably January of 2022, that bridge would go down. They would start work on the river restoration down at the Hy-Vee area and work north on the river. And then we would, at the same time, be working on the bridge replacement. Around April of 2022, then, we would foresee taking down the Brash Avenue intersection. That would give us about 12 weeks in there to get the Roundabout reconstructed and then reopen all that. So we have with that, with the storm sewer that's coming off Brash, and that's, I believe that's a 48-inch storm sewer, fairly significant. And how that terminates into the river with the river project, those drop structures, public access and trails down in there, it just didn't make sense to extend it out there as a part of Brash with the possibility then we'd have to come back and reconstruct that. It's not a cheap thing, probably about almost a quarter million dollars in there with that drainage structure or drainage storm sewer extension. So we wanted to make sure we were doing it right and doing it once. So we tied that in with the river and the Roundabout and the bridge.
And for the, as a reminder on the background of that, that, the Brash Avenue Reconstruction initial design called for a Roundabout at First and Brash, correct?
Correct. We had, as part of that project, we had stakeholders group, I think it existed with about 12 members, business owners, public down in that area of the community. We engaged them in a conversation that ultimately resulted in what you see down there for a cross-section. There were originally conversations around two Roundabouts, one at Fourth and Brash and the one here at First. Ultimately, stakeholders wanted to move away from the one at Fourth Street, but we did leave the one there at First Street.
And I guess if I'm looking this, looking at this as a member of the public, I'd ask, so what was the motivation for engineering proposal for a Roundabout there in terms of, why, why change? What was the underlying motivation?
It is a, it's a, it's a, it's a three-legged intersection right now with First Street, Brash intersects there. And there's no, there's no cross-traffic movement to it at this time. Traffic controls, pretty much been through signage. There was a need to, you know, there's enough turn movement, both southbound going west, eastbound going south, that something needed to be done to make that more efficient for the traffic so that people can make those turn movements. This was the most efficient design that we could think of from an engineering perspective to present there. Just off the top of my head, you know, a ride-in, ride-out with a median in First Street would be another way to make that a fairly efficient intersection.
I would agree, the left-hand turn off Brash onto First is not a, that's a problem.
Looking at the vision going forward with what they want, with what's going on Johnson Park and the river, there's going to be a lot more foot traffic down there is the way, kind of the way I look at it. It might be very helpful to have that Roundabout there to slow traffic down. Will that help you that?
It will. Traffic, as you enter a Roundabout, you naturally have to slow down to make that curve feel comfortable to you.
Right now, nothing slows that down. Even pedestrians with the flashing yellow crosswells, they don't slow down. And if with this picking up and people begin to use it more, I think it'd be a good feature to have there slowing down and make it more comfortable for the people who are enjoying that area and for the riders.
Steve, those traffic representations, the motion studies that you have on there, you feel confident that those were correctly put together?
I do. I know the individual that led the team that put this together. I would say he is a nationally-known traffic engineer, if not internationally-known with his background and experience. We had the A-team here, there was no question about that.
And those were done, I believe, September of this last year when school was in full session?
Those were done nineteen...
Was it 19?
Yeah.
When, when school was in full session, yes, okay.
Yeah, they had gone out in September. Originally the traffic and, you know, we did a full traffic study of the downtown area that went from Madison to Prospect and First to Seventh. We did that in June of that year, but we did not cap, because school was out, we didn't capture that school traffic volume. So we did it again, I believe it was mid-to-late September with, you know, eight-ish in the morning. We usually capture that data for about an hour so we know that we're capturing that peak volume. So we did that in the morning and we did that in the afternoon. And then you kind of take out the peak 15-minute period in that timeframe.
And Steve, some of, some of that was done after initial public input and questions about the feasibility of a Roundabout there, right?
That's correct. We were in, we were in the middle of design on Brash at that time or somewhere in that, maybe early stage, quarter percent, 20%.
You know, inevitably, anything street-related, you get questions about new plans or redesigns. So when did this come about? How did this come about? I just want to make clear on this project, there's been several opportunities for public input going back to the initial design concepts presented with Brash, right? Both with area property owners and with the public about this proposed redesign.
I know, I know for sure it was a topic at our 2020 one- and six-year plan presentation. And I'm pretty sure it was part of our 2019 one- and six-year street plan presentation as well. I know for sure 2020 and I think 2019, too.
On the street model you have on the screen there, I noticed that obviously it connects a two-lane to the north of the Roundabout. How far is that supposed to carry through a two-lane on First Street?
Sure. And, and right now, right now, I'd say there's no plan for a two-lane going north.
I just noticed on the clip that was up before it showed a two-lane all the way.
It does. So as you come out of that roundabout, obviously, it's two lanes in, so we constrain it, it's being constrained right now on, so that it's one lane in and one lane out. But as you go north of this, currently, it would just go back to its current four-lane configuration. I have presented some conversation to council that, you know, there would be an opportunity to look at a more modern, modern street layout, complete streets-type layout.
That's my question. I would consider this a First Street arterial road, you know? So is that, is that a modern street layout or a more arterial road layout? Part of what we're talking about.
In, I would say, in the vision of complete streets, which is what we would look at today, you know, it would be what I would consider to be a current conversation that I would bring to you with options and say, here are some options that, you know, as we reconstruct, reconfigure, overlay to the north up to First Street that, or up to Benjamin Avenue that could be considered. But there's, again, that conversation really doesn't exist at this time, but that would be something we would develop over the next couple of years.
With this current contract we're looking at here, is there the opportunity to provide a couple of different options within the contract as basically focusing on that roundabout area?
Within the, within the scope that's in front of us, certainly there's dollars there that could be converted to that, but within the scope, the way the contract's written, you know, I could, I can, this is scope to move forward in terms of final design. And so if there was, you know, if there was a desire to, to stop at some point as a function of final design and look at alternatives for intersection control, I'd need to come back with some sort, it could be a no-dollar amendment, but I'd probably have to come back with an amendment in scope to define exactly what we wanted our consultant to do.
Steve, has there been a discussion with the developers of that Alco property, is what I call it, for the how we would have ingress and egress from First and Brosch into there? I mean, right now, theoretically, it's an alley that you just shoot into.
Right. We have shared with that, with potential developers, the concept for a four-legged roundabout there, and that that would need to be incorporated somehow into that redevelopment.
And then, second question I have, you know, there's a historical building, in my mind it's historical, and the gate that all sits there, where you're going to be doing all this construction, what's, what's the plans? I mean, is that going to, going to keep that there?
I think that, the conversation that has been had is that that gate structure could, could be converted into some sort of public art piece, either through painting, coloring, welding, torching. I think there's an opportunity there to look at that as potentially some public art. It would probably, it would need to be relocated. The building, the old building structure that's there, I see that as a visitor-type kiosk that's presenting historical information about Johnson Park, the river, the mill.
Well, I just wouldn't want to see any of that demoed, because that's part of the history of our community.
Right. I understand from a gentleman that's been here most of his life, that the original power wheel from that mill is buried on that site. He said it was too big to take out, and they left it there and buried it.
Well, maybe you'll find it.
Might be more art there than we know.
Right. I think that's a good question. I think those historical elements, I certainly think there's a desire to retain those and make them a feature even of the surrounding landscape.
Gentlemen, I look at this as it's a, I mean, it's a major contract, and most of this, obviously, is for bridge and waterway redevelopment, obviously, and trail design connecting Johnson's Park to downtown or Brosch. But I also look at it as, I don't, I don't see a necessary need for that roundabout. We talk about pedestrian a little bit on this. We have two trails, ten-foot, eight-foot?
Ten and five.
Ten and five. So ten-foot on the, ten-foot on the north side, five-foot on the south side, obviously. There's ways for human traffic or any type of traffic to get, well, I shouldn't say any, no motorized traffic, but any type of traffic to get to the other side, obviously with a four-lane. What we just heard was it goes right back to a four-lane, so we're purposely congesting traffic in one area, and then going right back to four lanes, and I just feel people are, instead of just going with the flow, you're going to have slow down, speed up, get out of there as fast as you can, and a large congestion with railroad all the way back, let's say, roundabout to Norfolk Avenue or even Madison Avenue backing up. And obviously, we can adjust some stoplights accordingly, but it still makes it difficult. I look at this as Jefferson School's been there a long time, so is a high school, so is Washington, if you look all the way down at First and Omaha Avenue, or the middle school at First and Benjamin, where children are crossing four-lane roads and have been for a long, long time. Even as a, as a child that went to Jefferson and friends that lived on the other side of First Street, that's where those kids went to school and crossed with them many a times, whether we're going to a library or a friend's house. So I don't know, I don't necessarily see the purpose of this roundabout, guys. I wish there was more options. I wish it was part of a whole separate contract, to be honest with you, because I think this is a pretty decent, cool-looking project, that we're focusing a lot on a, on a roundabout that's a minor part of this. But as I hear, this is for final design, and I have hard times saying this is okay when I'm hearing comments to me on how I should, how I should vote on this. And so it's, it's tough for me to wrap my head around putting a roundabout there when, even though engineering aspect is, it's okay with design to, to do this, to move forward on this. So four lanes coming up to it, jam it down to two lanes, and then four lanes back out, four lanes still being by Johnson's Park Railroad. I don't, I don't know that this is the best, to me and people I talk to, that this is the best concept that we could come up with, so.
Steve, the bridge design is for four lanes, correct?
The bridge design is for, for that width, yes.
Is the concept to make it a two-lane across the bridge, but have a four-lane width?
With the roundabout, yes, it would be two lanes, two lanes across the bridge. So you could, you know, again, there's a conversation there that, how far north do you take that before you would convert in? So looking at, kind of looking at what's going on here, looking at downtown, thinking about the park aspect of it, bicycle traffic, you know, you could, you'd be able to have an on-street bike lane per se that would get you to the north side up into the Johnson Park area, and then that could transition back into your sidewalks on either side behind the curb. But it, again, this bridge is going in for a long time. I think this could be here easily a hundred years. You might, you know, you probably are going to have to put a new deck on it or something at sixty, but unlike the current two-strut, the past two structures that have been roughly forty-to-fifty-year structures, this is going to have a lifespan probably twice that. So, you know, just thinking about that as well.
Similar to Norfolk Avenue, correct?
Mm-hmm.
By, by Hy-Vee, similar to that bridge type of longevity, I guess is what I'm saying.
Steve, there's been some analysis, I've heard you talk about it, of First Street, and if, if it was rebuilt today, whether it would justify having four lanes. And traffic counts today do not justify that. That's not...
I don't, do you know, I believe Mike Malone, our traffic engineer with JEO, is available online. I don't know if there's a way, if he is out there, if you can see him out there, but to go ahead and allow, allow him access via conference phone or something, but that is correct, Mayor. In the old days, you know, rurally, from probably the nineteen twenties up until the nineteen seventies, eighties, we looked at our, our right-of-way as moving vehicles, moving traffic. Rurally, we started in the nineties to really understand that our right-of-ways moved people, and people move in a variety of ways, vehicles being prominent, but we move on bicycles, scooters, by foot, you know, there's a lot of different ways that we move through our right-of-way corridor. Today, if I'm going to, if I'm looking at a two-way street that is truly at capacity, I'm going to look at my left-turn movements on that street, and most likely, especially in a, in a business environment, even a residential environment, move that, move that left turns out of my through traffic into a center turn lane before I would ever look at four lanes. So it's two lanes, three lanes, five lanes is really the concept today, pulling that left-turn traffic out so that it's not conflicting with all that through traffic. Also, just thinking about multi, multimobility, complete streets, people want to move around in different ways, and we want them to move around in those different ways, because anything other than a vehicle is much more healthy for us. And so we're, you know, we look at that in our corridor design. Currently, we have a complete streets committee going on, the steering committee for complete streets just met today, and we'll be looking at plans to put something in place in city code and city design standards going forward that encourage us as a community to look at and recognize that complete street aspect and multimodal aspect of our right-of-ways. Mike, are you on?
Yes, I am here, Stephen, and Mayor, and Council.
Yes.
Would you like me to speak to the, to the roundabout or the capacity of First Street or?
Well, just, just knowing you're on there, I would open that to council, that, you know, Mike is available if there were questions. Me and Mike's, he was with I-Terris for a long time, now he's with JEO, but he's, he is a national expert in traffic.
Yep, Mike, I think it'd be interesting to hear the engineering perspective from, as to why a roundabout at this intersection was called for in the first place, because we're talking about, this isn't a new concept. It goes back to a year and a half ago, two years ago, when Brosch was first proposed. So that's, that's what I'd be interested in hearing.
Sure. Well, the, the, the basic history of the roundabout at First and Brosch really stems from the, the conversation that we had back when the traffic study was done, that the eastbound approaches, that intersection does experience some delays during the peak hour. They're, they're not substantial delays in terms of like level of service C or F, but they're pretty consistent level of service C and D type of operation. So people do experience delays, and they do have difficulty making that, especially the left-hand movement, the eastbound and northbound movement. And so there was consideration of, is the traffic signal warranted? And the answer to that is no, a traffic signal is not warranted there, doesn't meet any of the warrants in the MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And even if it didn't meet the warrants, we probably would, would have some concerns about putting a signal there just because of the spacing with Norfolk Avenue. So the roundabout was brought up because it, it allows that movement to operate at a much more acceptable level of service, and, and it gives a lot of flexibility in terms of meeting potential future traffic demand, especially with this potential development that, that it's not known exactly, you know, for sure what the traffic demand may be. So, you know, in a nutshell, that's the history of the roundabout. It's, you know, is it needed? You know, you could say, no, it's not needed. Is it the best form of traffic control? I would certainly say it's perhaps one of the best forms of traffic control. It's a very safe intersection, it's a very high-capacity intersection, and it gives you a lot of flexibility to handle the, the traffic volumes that exist now and in the future. I guess, I guess I could add on a little bit. Stephen, you did a great job of, I think, explaining sort of the, the complete streets aspects of it, and while that wasn't necessarily an initial part of our, our traffic study, we did some evaluation of the, the First Street corridor and, and, you know, is four lanes needed or not? And I think, you know, Mayor kind of alluded to the fact that the volumes are, are on the low end of what would really be, would require a four-lane roadway section. So, you know, there is some, there is some conversation certainly going on throughout the country and early throughout the world, that these types of roadways that are sort of in this volume range, that used to be four-lane undivided roadways, are, are being converted to three-lane roadway sections, primarily three-lane roadway sections, potentially even wide two-lane roadway sections with various amenities for pedestrians or bicyclists. And the real reason for that is the, the multimodal aspects of, of serving all different types of users and not just motorists. And the, the four-lane undivided road is really a, it's a roadway section that has fallen out of favor primarily because it does have some pretty significant operational and safety challenges. So, you know, to the extent that, you know, you consider that to be something other than a four-lane road, you know, I think that would be a very good thing for the city to look at, even though it's sort of unrelated from the First and Brosch Street project on its own.
And Mike, as you know, we've invested a lot in Brosch Avenue reconstruction, so as analysis has shown, the left-turn movement from Brosch onto First is limited and constrained as we are. This, this is a solution that could potentially further activate Brosch as a, as a transportation corridor in the downtown. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, yeah, that would be an accurate statement. I think it gives a lot of ability for that movement to not be viewed problematic as, as it may be now by some people, and it certainly gives flexibility going forward based on Brosch either having additional traffic or some of the development spurring additional traffic, and I think would, would be a very good solution in terms of serving those traffic needs.
Yeah, Shane, please.
That, that is the exact tweet that I wanted to make from a public safety response standpoint. When we look at Brosch's reconstruction, Brosch Avenue is a major corridor for, for emergency traffic going east from the police station and from Fire Station One. As we looked at the reconstruction of Brosch, we, and how it was built, we really anticipated the roundabout going in as a, to, to allow for that ease of movement and that transfer of traffic, so we can continue to use that as an emergency response, because right now it's narrow. So as, as the roundabout goes in, that opens up that flow, and as long as people are approaching a roundabout at a slow speed and, and using it how, how it's designed, we anticipate a good flow for our ambulances and fire trucks and our police cruisers as they go through there versus what it is now because of the narrowing of Brosch and the redesign. I think that really will complement our ability to go east.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Shane. Any other questions, comments?
Will this, will this roundabout be able to accommodate some of our truck traffic that is downtown, such as the Apara trucks that leave every morning and come in, and then they have their semi-trailer that comes and drops off laundry from out of, out of town? Will that be able to accommodate these people, these?
Yeah, one of the things we did in terms of laying that out was had a conversation with both NIMCO, I can't recall specifically on the Apara side, but I believe, I would say we did have a conversation with Apara and NIMCO on their truck sizes to make sure we were capturing the largest trucks that were, would have to be coming through here. This, this has a pretty good footprint compared to some of the smaller ones around town. Twenty-Fifth and Benjamin's probably one of our smaller ones. But again, yes, we, we did reach out to, to those folks that have some of the larger trucks coming in there to make sure that they move through here okay.
Yeah, because that, this was part of the Brosch Avenue... Yeah, because that, this was part of the Brash Avenue redesign, we had the opportunity with stakeholders along Brash and in that area, including Apira and NIMCO, I believe, to get any and all opinions on navigation of that particular intersection and what change might bring. That's one benefit of having had this be part of that concept going back a year and a half, two years ago.
I guess, Steve, I have one more question. If this passes tonight, then there's no way as, as the people that are, have, have to get home off of First Street one way or the other, there is no way that Benjamin and First Street and this project will overlay each other to make it more complicated for those individuals to get home?
So that's a, that's a really good conver, uh, question, I guess, Councilmember. We're very cognizant of the amount of work that's going to be going on here in our community in 2022, that being this project with the roundabout and the bridge. We're also going to be under reconstruction on Benjamin Avenue, as you mentioned. We will, we will be working with the design team to identify an actual detour route. That detour route is expected to be Fourth and Riverside up to Benjamin Avenue. The concept right now is to require the contractor to build from Benjamin Avenue to 13th Street while this is under construction here. And then, once this is done and reopened to traffic, we would then allow the contractor on Benjamin to work from Riverside east to First Street. So we want to keep this, just kind of recognizing what's going on here. We want to be sure that our detour route is, is free and clear and open to traffic.
Thank you.
Again, just looking at my, my final point, I guess, would be, I'm a little confused in the fact of why we want to take an arterial road and slow it down. My mic's on, isn't it?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, better before.
Well, I want to take that arterial road and slow it down in my pocket because it's, I've always been extremely proud of our community and the fact that it's easy to get around more for it. I've been in other cities and this size, it's not like this. We have every, roughly every mile we have to wait to get around town very quickly. This road, the road receives a lot of traffic. I feel like this is intentionally turned into a situation where we're going to pull it down into a snail's pace and then speed it up again once you get past this. And I understand we have a great opportunity down here to enhance our, you know, public recreation, a great opportunity to enhance everything that Josh and other people have been working on as far as, you know, the outgo area. And if all this is coming about, why aren't we looking to make, we've got a, we've got a sidewalk going underneath the bridge. We've got the Debskin Bridge just down the river from this. I mean, I feel like we're taking care of people walking around. But now we're not, but I don't feel this is taking care of the traffic. And with no other options or ideas on the table, proving this contract, I feel like we're essentially saying, we're just all about people walking around and going to parks and not about people getting work in the morning. And that's why maybe I have a sense of a little frustration about this. But I feel like that, I feel like it's a tremendous project, and I'm stuck in a bad spot because now I just, you just hear or I just hear that Brash Street now with the new design, and there's no way you could put a, the only thing you can do is a right turn and right down out is one option we talked about. That's not a word of public safety. Because they, they take Brash out, need to go. Need to go, they will take the turn. So now, public safety's saying, the roundabout is definitely needed. I, I, you're not going to say, I'm not going to, I can't vote against the roundabout. So now I'm in a situation where I'm sitting here going, I'm potentially trying to slow down traffic, which I, it's in the intent, obviously, because of the park. But this isn't arterial road. I feel like we should have a design in front of this that shows how we can move people. We've got property that could be purchased to expand it. We maybe have to go one, maybe we go to three, a lane or a two-lane or a turning lane, or even a maximum four-lane or a turning lane. It has some sort of opportunity for this to be for both moving traffic at a good, a decent rate without getting frustrated and take care of our residents who want to, you know, ride bikes and walk the job, you know, like this. So if I'm seeing this wrong and I'm way out of place, tell me now because that's where I'm struggling. I don't want to be the one that sorts this whole thing out for it.
Well, the thing I'm looking at, from what you just said, as you talk about slowing it down, if it's a residential area, the speed limit is 25 anyway, right?
Okay.
So it's going to be three blocks to get past the park and you're back to 35. So you're talking three blocks, you're going to be slowed down.
Yeah. And that would be, that would be extremely frustrating when you end up working through.
Three blocks. So we say one minute or?
I don't think it's just three blocks. It could be all the way back to Madison Avenue. Now you've got five blocks. Or it could be a train going through at the same time schools going through, at the same time everybody's going to work. I think this is a horrible...
What happens now?
Exactly. Now try and get it down to, trying to get it to two lanes instead of four.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is, this has got, there's a tremendous amount of thought and effort that went into the presentation we seen tonight. I'm not saying that it's wrong. I'm just saying I want an option to look at. And essentially, with this contract, the option we could possibly give might have been a option to look at right in, right in, right out. But with the presentation from our, from our safety director, that's really not an option at all. That's what we said. Right?
Steve, maybe you can look this up. I'm trying to remember. When I moved here 31 years ago, First Street was two lanes. And I can't remember south of Norfolk Avenue what it was, just memories slips me. But doubt, I can't remember which one went four lane first either. Some of you guys may remember, but I can't. But I know we, it was two lane through there. And then we went to four. So I'm trying to guess, the question I would have is, do we have more traffic now than when we had that back in 1990 versus now in 2021?
I don't, I don't recall what the traffic numbers are on Norfolk, but I believe there's a substantial portion of Norfolk west of 13th that's three-lane. And I think that the traffic counts are similar.
On First Street? That's what I'm getting at, is First Street, Shane's talking about it a year ago.
Right, right.
And it was two lane. And it was two lane to the south in the late 80s.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, Shane, I think, I have to agree, one of the benefits of living in a community like Norfolk is you can get around pretty easy. Yeah. And part of that's traffic design and flow, and part of that's just our, our population base. But this, to me, and kind of getting to what Gary was saying, there's a, there's a constraining here, but I think it's, I think it's purposeful. We hear a lot in terms of residential where people for the sake of safety want traffic speeds to slow. I get your point about being arterial. But there is a, there is an inner mix here. There is residential right here. There's a mix of residential. There's a mix of commercial. There's a mix of public space in which there's pedestrian traffic, and there's likely to be more and more. So I think for the sake of this particular segment, it's not necessarily a bad thing to, to calm traffic and get people to pay a little bit more attention to what they're doing. Right now, I mean, just anecdotally, when I'm down there, walking in the area, riding bikes with the kids, it's a little cringey. I mean, it's a freeway, and there's not a lot of attention paid to the crosswalks, especially that inside, two inside lanes of traffic. It can get kind of messy down in there. I think there's a public safety benefit here beyond just the increased flow of traffic north-south on First from Brash, but also just getting everybody to pay a little bit more attention and be a, be a safe driver and recognize what's around you. Using this design to do that is prudent to me. And I don't think it's a major inconvenience. I don't think, I don't see this adding significant time to anybody's commute. I mean, that's just, that's just my personal opinion. But looking at it, looking at the, knowing that engineering's done a full analysis of traffic flow, which we can see through these simulations, there's been the homework done on this. I mean, it's not something that was brought here on the back of a napkin last week. It's gone through several, several layers of public input, engineering analysis. And I will remind that the Council did approve moving forward on this with design on, in April 6, 2020, by a seven to one vote, the Council said, we understand that there's intended to be a roundabout at First and Brash. We're comfortable with that. Let's move forward with the design. That happened. And that happened after two separate subcommittee meetings of the Council studying this very topic on top of the public input sessions that had been done. So I don't, I, I don't think this was half-baked in any way. I think it was fully studied, fully analyzed, makes best use of that space for traffic flow and safety in a part of town that's going to be increasingly used, whether it's pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, intermixing with the existing motor vehicle traffic.
My, my observation would be similar to yours, Mayor, and that, that is that the population in that area won't do anything over time except increase, not only vehicle, but pedestrian as well. Shane makes a good point that there's, there's bridges, you know, there's, there's sidewalks underneath the bridges. There's going to be a bridge going across the river, and all that is well and good. And, and we certainly hope that they get used a lot. But I also know that roundabouts are the safest intersections we can have in our community to move traffic. You, you never T-bone anybody in a, in a roundabout. If you, if you brush against somebody, the, the, the chances of having an injury accident are very, very small. As far as commute time goes, it hasn't been proven to me that it makes, as the Mayor said, a significant difference in the amount of time it takes to get from point A to point B. And it's quite common, and properly so, that when you have congested areas, the speed limits are, are lower. And the speeds increase as the congestion goes away. Much like if you're going up Highway 81 from, from Norfolk Avenue, and you're driving 35 miles an hour, you can't drive 45 until you get out of the congested areas. So, given the study and the engineering behind it, I think, I think it's a prudent plan that we're going to take a look at tonight, the roundabout being a very, very small part of it. But I think the roundabout will serve the community with great public safety.
Rob, I, I, I mean, I can appreciate the whole plan and the contract here. And like I said before, it's larger than just this roundabout, which I, I think is a great idea for downtown. I really, really do. Very hard time with this roundabout, obviously. Pedestrian wise, like I said, there's, there's ways around. You know, there's sidewalks on the side. There's, there's access underneath the bridge on both sides. We're showing a pedestrian bridge there. I think we could probably do a heck of a lot better in this city with pedestrian crosswalks and new signage and more, or newest, newer technology that's out. And obviously, I think some of ours is outdated. We could, we can fix that issue on some of this pedestrian crossing right there without affecting how much traffic's going to go through there. I look at this concept that's up here and how large that is compared to how the, as we referenced, that the Alco parking lot is used now, which is very little. If this is actually as massive as it is, and I understand the whole, the idea is some of these people would be living downtown also, but, but parking lot wise, pretty massive. And that means a lot more traffic, which means you got to get traffic in and out of your downtown. You know, we don't want to be a, traffic downtown Omaha is horrible, right? And we don't want to have a congestion where people just don't want to go down, in my opinion. So I, again, I think this whole project is amazing, but this one little portion, I hate to say it, but this one little portion is stumbling me where we don't have an option. If we pass us, it's a go. And I, I just don't like that option at all.
Any other questions or comments, Council?
Steve, is there any other communities our size that have taken, like, like Fred said, is, we had a four lane, and now we're going to take it down to a two lane? Is there any, and done something similar to this where they saw greater benefit than what they currently had or have?
Mike, I might need to rely on you to answer that. The best I can do is, is I don't definitively know that. I pay a lot of attention when I'm traveling. Minnesota was an early adopter. They have a lot of roundabouts. I'm trying to think. I know Eagle, I think it's Eagle View right there off of I-90. Has a couple just as you come in there. One of them right next to, I think they're high school, junior high. Colorado was also an early adopter of roundabouts. Grand Junction comes to mind. I'm going to say that yes, there is a model for that in Grand Junction, just based on the number of roundabouts that they have. But I can't answer that 100%. Mike, do you have any background or history on that?
The question was, are there examples of other communities similar in size that have converted a four-lane road to a three-lane road?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, there's lots of examples in Lincoln and Omaha. And granted, those are larger cities, but I can tell you from firsthand experience, I've, I've been involved in, you know, probably a half a dozen projects in Lincoln and Omaha that have converted roadways with that, actually more traffic than you have. Probably traffic that's probably closer to, you know, maybe 14, 15, 16, 18,000 vehicles a day, where First, First Street today, I think is closer to 12,000 cars a day. A couple of other examples that I've been involved with that are, you know, I would say similar size or even smaller sized communities. Highway, I, I think it's 36 or 136, it's the, the highway through Beatrice used to be four lanes. It's been converted to three. Highway 75 through Auburn, portions of it used to be four lanes. They've been converted to three lanes. So there, there's some examples of, of, you know, smaller mid-sized communities that have also made this. But there's, there's literally hundreds of examples where communities have, have downsized from a four-lane to a three-lane road under very similar volume conditions as you're talking about here.
Mike, this, Frank Arns, I have a follow-up question on that. So how much study was given to a three-lane road here versus the roundabout?
Can you, the, the question is, how much study was done on a three-lane road?
Yes.
Well, we didn't, as, as part of the traffic study that we originally did, we never really set out to study a four-lane or a three-lane road. The, the discussion of kind of four-lane and three-lane, at least from our perspective, kind of came up when the roundabout discussion started. And then there was some discussion about, you know, could, could a road diet or could a downsizing of the road be considered? And, and with the traffic study, you know, showing that a single-lane roundabout was more than adequate from a capacity perspective, then the discussion kind of turned towards, well, we've got a four-lane road. So what do we do? Do we build the, you know, a, a multi-lane roundabout? Or do we figure out how to downsize the number of lanes going through the roundabout? You know, so we didn't really set out to study four lanes versus three lanes. It was sort of a, a byproduct of, of the traffic analysis and the roundabout discussion.
And just to be clear, that's not, that's not been defined as to future plans to narrow from four to, four to three over any extended period along that stretch?
It has not. You know, I anticipated that that would be a future conversation that we would, as we start to look at, you know...
start to look at, you know, uh, First Street going north needs some reconstruction, potential mill and overlay here in the next two, three years. So, um, as those things would approach us to start to have conversation about that looking forward.
Yeah, I can say anecdotally 13th Street in Lincoln is one of those that went from, uh, four to three, and there was a lot of discussion about that. And I think, um, you would see what, from the outcomes, that traffic flow has not been impeded, and it's probably a lot safer corridor at this point. Um, and I, I don't have a whole lot more to say here, but I would just urge the perspective of not opposing change for change's sake. Um, a recent example at Fourth and Brash, uh, where we had stoplights before at that intersection, and, um, we, we changed that to become stop signs. And if you would've read the comments on social media, you would've thought the world was going to end because we did that. I haven't heard one thing since that time, since that change has been made, uh, that's been negative about that change. In fact, I've heard the opposite. I've heard positive comments about how that's worked. And I think the traffic flow is, it, it's actually been better. And lo and behold, that was the suggestion that was made to us by engineering analysis, people who study this on a daily basis. We followed their advice, and it seemed to work. How about that?
Yeah, I got one last question I think we didn't touch on, and, um, just out of curiosity, but with where the old Alco building sits, obviously in this model, it's, it's taken away, um, where the YMCA sits, the old auditorium, where, I believe there's a house on the northwest corner, how does the roundabout like this affect property acquisition, where it sits?
Um, so I've, I've brought up kind of the roundabout. This, this was an earlier development. Again, it's, if you look at the center of the roundabout, it's centered in, uh, about the southbound lanes. Um, I'd say the, the, the line between the two southbound lanes is roughly the center of the roundabout. So, uh, I, you know, as a function of final design and knowing that, um, the Alco site is, uh, going to be going into some form of, of renovation, redevelopment, we would look to move this both south and east, um, to provide, and that would provide, that'd probably move that sidewalk past the front of that property back to where the existing sidewalk is right now. Um, there would be a little bit of impact there to the east, going east of the, east of the house, but it would be minimized. And we're pretty confident that we can minimize impact on all the, the western side, so the YMCA and to the north side there, uh, to those residences, um, put a little bit more impact over onto the Alco site.
Do we anticipate the, you can kind of see the building there, I believe that's a, a truck loading dock, but do we anticipate some of that part of that building being gone, or the entire building being gone by the time this roundabout would go in, or how's that going to affect?
No, as a function of the roundabout, we would probably look at construction, you know, that's, that's part of the final design contract is to sit down and kind of consider all of that. Um, we'd probably actually look at some sort of a three lane configuration as long as the Alco building, building was there and it, and the rest of that site was there, and there was access off of First. Once that building goes away, then we'd want to have, you know, a solid plan in place to add that fourth leg or, or that approach. But I know, I think Mike might have some comments on, on the, um, the functionality of the roundabout as a fourth leg versus just what that other image is showing where it's more of an approach. Um, the fourth leg is going to make it much more efficient for traffic coming out of the Alco site to get into it versus just in a, a driveway approach to try and access that.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Stephen, the, the, assuming that the fourth leg would go in, and again, not knowing exactly what the traffic volumes are, the, the, the fourth leg would serve to make the roundabout more efficient. I mean, roundabouts, I guess, work better when there's traffic flowing on all four legs of the intersection, the more balanced the flows are, the better they work. I mean, that's not a requirement, but when that happens, that it just, it creates the gaps, it, it creates the most acceptable gaps on all four legs of the intersection.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one more. The current design for this bridge that we're talking about, will this design have any capacity to increase traffic if it's needed done in the future, or are we going to be locked into a two lane sidewalk?
No, we're locked, we're locked into a, we're locked in, I don't know what the width of it is, uh, but we're, we're locked into basically the width it is today, is what, we're putting that same width back. We might have wider sidewalks, so it might be a little bit wider as a function of sidewalks. But the roadway itself, back and curb to back or curb, uh, what it is today is what it'll be in the redesign. So, as we're two lanes out of a roundabout right now going across there, and maybe, you know, looking at some multimodal aspects across that bridge potentially, um, in the future, as, as, you know, maybe it's 50 years, 60 years down the road, whatever that future date is, when the traffic does need that width across the bridge, it would have to be constrained to four lanes across that bridge. It might be five lanes going north of there, but we'd have to lose that center turn lane across there in a, you know, long range, future view.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I just, I just gotta make one more comment on this. I, I agree with the First Street, you know, 13th Street, 25th Street, 37th, just being your main arterial roads. I like that concept. Um, I like to keep them flowing as much as possible. But when our safety, um, units from both the police and fire department are heading east on Brash, and, and they're behind the idea of a, of a roundabout helping them, uh, get to eastbound calls, uh, I, I do know a left turn right now is very difficult off of Brash, and now that it's been narrowed, it's even worse. I, I agree, a stoplight probably is not an answer. Uh, it's too close to Norfolk Avenue. I do wish that maybe there was a third lane option, but I do think that possibly the roundabout is a, is an answer for, for the safety aspect of, of this location. This is my two cents.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Hearing non-oral call, please.
Granquist?
No.
Arns?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeble House?
Yes.
Muren?
No.
Jackson?
Yes.
Clausen?
No.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
Voting in the affirmative, Arns, Merrill, Weeble House, Jackson, and Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Granquist, Muren, and Clausen. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number 30. Uh, would look for a motion to consider approval of amendment number one to the Engineering Services Contract with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for the Norfolk 2019 Bridge Repairs Project for an amount not to exceed $17,500.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in second, and for some background on this, again, Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor, Council. This is the, uh, an amendment to the bridge repair projects, um, that were completed on Benjamin Avenue, um, Maple, and North First Street. Um, JEO is here to provide, uh, some, some comment and answer any questions that you would have as well. Um, the amendment is stemming from both the changes we made at the First Street over the levee, as well as changes we made at, uh, Benjamin Avenue over the levee. Uh, just to, to go back in time a little bit, um, at the First Street Bridge, um, we were doing spall repair on the deck, and as a function of that, the, the way the engineering is done, you go out, um, generally closed traffic, but you can do it under traffic, and you, um, check for deck delaminations. It's a process of a, of a chain drag and a bolping hammer or something there, too. And it's pretty easy to hear and spot delamination. Um, for whatever reason, uh, once we got under construction or under contract for, for, for the repairs, and the contractor got on site and started hammering on the deck, A, he's got lar- much larger equipment, uh, but as they started hammering on the deck, there was a lot more spall repair, both partial depth and full depth, uh, than what had been identified in the, you know, original pre-engineering. As a function of that, uh, the design team recommended that we do a full deck overlay, and so we, uh, brought that to council. Council did approve, uh, that full deck overlay. Uh, there was, like, I don't remember the exact cost, uh, I apologize for not having those, but it was somewhere around, I think, $170,000 change order, if I recall correctly. Um, so there was, there was some additional work on behalf of JEO, uh, to, to, to make that happen. Uh, they also worked, uh, pretty quickly to make that happen and get the, the, the deck overlay information in front of the contractor. Um, there was some benefit to us as a community. Uh, the original deck repair, um, had a serviceable life of in the range of seven to 10 years. Uh, with the delamination or with the full deck overlay and, and deck repairs, we probably doubled, uh, the life expectancy of that, of that repair. So, again, there were certainly some value to, to that change, um, even though, you know, the, it was a fairly substantial change to us in dollars on the contract. Um, with regard to the Benjamin Avenue Levy Project, uh, when the contractor was out there working on the sidewalks and guardrail installation behind the curb, uh, they pulled the guardrail posts, and at that time, we determined that the guardrail posts did not meet national standards. They had been cut off short due to, um, buried, uh, utilities. I think they were communication lines that were right up behind the curb. We couldn't just simply go in there and put the same shorter posts in there. Uh, we, we would've had to work with the communications companies to relocate those. Um, ultimately, we ended up moving away from the traditional guardrail there. Uh, JEO went back and redesigned a solid concrete barrier rail. We also eliminated the guardrail on the off ends of the structure. Um, and so, again, there's value there to us as a city. We probably spend about, uh, $250 a year per corner, uh, going out there with weed whackers and knocking the weeds down underneath that guardrail and stuff. So, there is value there to have all four of those corners gone, uh, and have a concrete barrier rail in place. What happened there is, uh, JEO, again, worked, uh, right after that was found, they approached us with some concepts, uh, we approved some concepts to move forward with, they got the engineering done. In the meantime, the contractor pulled off during that two or three weeks that that engineering was getting done, and we were approving, approving those changes. And then it was about 16 weeks or so, 12 weeks before the contractor got back, uh, and was able to, to finish that up. And I know there was a lot of dissatisfaction on the part of my street crews because I made them maintain the traffic control during that time. Uh, you know, there's dissatisfaction on, on our part, just in terms of having to deal with that. I know you guys were contacted by citizens wondering what was going on. So, because of, of some of those conversations, I asked JEO to be present today to answer questions with regard to this contract amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve or JEO on this?
Um, those guardrail posts, say they were shortened, I guess, when it was originally put in? Were the standards different then that would've allowed that to happen? I mean, that, really, that's not that old of a bridge.
I don't think so. Those guardrail standards have been around for several decades. I mean, that was one of the first things I was doing in 1983, was designing guardrail and, um, pretty much.
That was put in in the 90s.
Same standards.
And it was a state project, it wasn't a city project, that was just...
That could very well be, uh, your...
Would anybody, I guess for engineering purposes, would you have pulled the old, old records when they built that to see what they had said there?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if they did, or, I don't know if they did or not. Uh, it would be...
Wasn't that old of a project.
Be untypical to anticipate that when you're looking at guardrail in place, that somebody circumvented the design standard from a crash worthiness perspective and put in a, something that may not have been as crash worthy or met the design standards. Um, so...
They only cut the posts that were in conflict. You can tell they...
You want to go up, Stephen, for your name?
Okay.
Steve Arns with JEO Consulting Group. Um, see, I, I, when, when they pulled it out, you could tell all the posts, they usually are all the same length along the whole system, and they only cut a handful of them that were in conflict with the utilities. You could tell someone basically cut the corner and did something they weren't supposed to, just to make it work, is what happened. So, it's complete unknown on our end until it got pulled out that they did that, so...
So, this is your request for an amendment to the original Engineering Services Contract we had on these projects, and Steve gave a background of, that may have explained why, but I'd like to hear from, in your words, why come back to us and ask for more money than was originally agreed upon?
I agree with all Stephen's, uh, comments he had. This, this request is for, it's all the same reasons he mentioned, going through those, uh, changes on First Street that occurred, moving towards the overlay. Um, and then also Benjamin Avenue, switching up this guardrail design. There was also a switch on the Elm Avenue Bridge, wasn't quite as significant as these others, too. We did change some stuff on the overlays, on the approaches leading up to the bridge. They'd add some benefit, uh, to that project, uh, to that bridge, too. Um, so, we had talked through all these changes throughout the project with Stephen, um, during the project and, and afterwards, too, and, uh, we were watching where we were at on budget, and, um, we're in constant communication with him, and, uh, through those communications where we ended up with this $17,500 change order for the additional costs it took us.
Steve, do you, I do not believe that this is 100% of your overrun as well, is that correct?
Correct. We, we did end up spending more than this on the project. But we want to, you know, keep our good relationship going with you guys. Um, I know we're doing good work with you. Um, look forward to working more project with you, so we definitely want to keep that going, including this First Street Bridge we just talked about, so...
I know we had a conversation on this when we got the supplemental, uh, change order for the First Street Bridge, because we talked about how you test for delamination. Stephen had talked about under traffic. I guess my thought would be, how long does it take you to test one of those bridges if you just shut the traffic down? I know the cost associated with that.
The thing with testing is, we can go out and test it, we chain, chain drag it, we're just trying to listen for the bad spots. You know, it's hard to really get a complete picture of what's, you know, deteriorated in there until you really start breaking it out. So it's, gives you an estimate, but you just don't know for sure until you start really getting into the construction and doing removals and see where that deterioration extends to.
You don't do core samples or whatever that is, when you drill into it?
No, not beforehand.
That's not normal? Okay. Thanks.
Was there, did we use JEO on preliminary design services?
For this?
Right. I mean, there's, right, and, and so, I, I'm having trouble with trying to, I mean, some of the unknowns, obviously, posts being cut off, nobody's going to see that except for the guy that did it, probably, or project manager that wasn't on site at that time, which is out of all of our control. But, um, so many things I'm thinking could have been or should have been thought of in the early stages, and maybe I'm wrong, that's why I'm asking. Where am I, where am I lost in how a couple of these things couldn't have been caught?
Yeah.
beforehand instead of now?
I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, my, my background does include several dat, deck delamination surveys and, and little slump overlays. I would say it's, I would say it's about 50/50. 50% of the time you get it right and 50% of the time you get it short. In this particular case, we ended up in the, you know, on the 50% short side. The technology they used, I, I mean, that's the technology that I used for 20 years and I think it's still the technology that's used today for most, all of your deck delamination It, it, it does a pretty good job of identifying things, but it's, once you're out there with a jackhammer pounding on a deck, that's quite a bit different than a chain drag and a hammer. And once you start the project, you don't want to just take off 80% of the delamination or 90% of the delamination, you want to take all the delamination, otherwise your project's for naught. So it, unlike city streets where we can say, you know what, we're going to go over quantity here, we're just going to stop. You know, there's no really good place to stop, you could replace the whole street for, for a mile, but you just have to pick a place and stop. On a deck delamination survey and a deck, deck delam repair, you just can't stop halfway or quarter away or 90% of the way, you got to do it all. I don't know how else to answer that.
No, that's fine. I, I just thought it was worth asking because I, I, obviously there's an increase and it's something that possibly we have to pay out. There's obviously a comment that we shared costs on this increase and this isn't the total amount, so I think we appreciate that too. But I think just an understanding of how we got to this point is.
I believe their total cost was around $25,000 if I remember seeing the number.
Yeah, it was about $26,000 was the total cost on our end, additional cost.
Any other questions? Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 31 would entertain a motion to consider approval of a construction engineering services contract with Olson Incorporated for the Legacy Bend Fourth and Fifth Edition Utility and Paving Improvements Project for an amount not to exceed $121,900.
I'll make consideration for approval.
Second.
Motion in second, and Steve, background on this, please.
Mayor and Council, Olson's and Associates is the design engineer for the Legacy Bend Edition Improvements that are going on on the east side of town. We do not do contract service on all of our subdivisions, but that particular developer, it's a cost that they bear, it's assessed back to the developer and he recovers that, that cost as a function of his lots. It is a, it is a model that we prefer to see and we'll probably have some conversation around as we go forward, requiring all of our subdivision developers to do some sort of a, a engineering contract to make sure that we're getting the engineering services we need to take over that infrastructure once it's complete. So I, I, I think it's good that they're doing this. Again, there's no cost to us as a city, it's, it's a cost that's borne by the developer and assessed back to them as, as a function of their lot cost.
And Steve, this is a project and it's what, third or fourth phase, entering its third phase?
This is, yeah, this is the fourth edition, so it's entering its fourth phase. This is part of the phase that I call it the neo, neo-traditional development, so we've, we've approved in the past, the, the front of the homes are going to be closer. I think there's a 10-foot setback off the front versus our typical 25-foot setback, I think, is, is what we have on our, on our front. So the homes are much more forward on the lots, there's alleys in, in these and garages in the rear, so it's, we're entering that, that single family neo-traditional portion.
This phase also includes some multifamily though too, doesn't it? Or is this all just single family?
There, there may be, I can't recall whether or not there's a component of that multifamily housing included in this. I often, I, I want to say this is all single family residential in these two.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item 32, would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5718, authorizing issuance of public safety equipment tax anticipation and refunding bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $2 million to refund the Series 2014 Public Safety Equipment Tax Anticipation Bonds and provide funding for public safety equipment and building improvements.
Your Honor, I'd move for consideration of ordinance number 5718. Second.
Motion in second, and for some background on this, Randy Gates, our city finance officer, please.
As you mentioned, this is both a refunding issue and a new money issue. $850,000 will be used to refund the bond, existing bonds, and the $1,520,000 used for purchasing fire capital and police capital items. There's various items in that, including hazmat equipment, EOC upgrade, dispatch renovation, equipment for crash reconstruction, a call logger, mobile data computer upgrade, police boiler replacement, police parking lot, police building, architecture and engineering, and the fires share the mobile truck lift. This bond issue is expected to be $1,930,000. This bonds consist of a Series A bond, which is for the refunding bonds, a Series B bond for the new funding. Series B bonds are not bank qualified because we expect to issue more than $10 million this year and the interest rate on those is probably going to be about a quarter percent higher than the interest rate on the refunding bonds. Since we're refunding existing bank qualified paper, we can issue bank qualified paper for the refunding portion. By bank qualified, I mean the banks can deduct their carrying costs for these bonds, whereas otherwise they cannot. So that's why we get a little break on those on interest rate, but, interest rates. The refunding analysis includes an agenda package anticipates reducing debt service payments over the next nine years by more than $70,000 with a net present value benefit greater than $68,000. I expect those numbers are conservative, but the pricing has not yet been fixed on these. The net present value benefit based on those numbers is 8.1% of the refunded principal and the interest rates of a half percent, 1.25% are what's anticipated for the refunding bond share compared to the outstanding bonds which have interest rates from 2 to 3.15% with the maturity of December 15, 2029. This ordinance authorizes a mayor or myself to determine the final interest rates, true interest cost, and aggregate principal amount and approve the preliminary and final official statements. This is a 20-year bond issue with a five-year call provision. Recommend passage of this ordinance on all three readings. Piper Sandler is in right in these bonds and Bruce Leffler with Piper Sandler is here tonight. Either he or I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Or comments? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of public safety equipment tax anticipation and refunding bonds of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in one or more series in the principal amount of not to exceed $2 million for the purposes of purchasing public safety equipment and public safety building improvements and miscellaneous costs associated therewith in refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city, directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same, authorizing the delivery of the bonds to the purchaser, authorizing officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale of the bonds and to designate the final terms, rates and maturity schedules for said bonds within stated parameters, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
With that, roll call please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5718 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move for suspension of the rules, pass ordinance 5718 on second and third, as it appears some of this needs to be taken care of sooner than later.
For a second.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, roll call please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5718 carries on second and third.
Last but not least, item 33, would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2021-4 calling the $850,000 worth of outstanding Series 2014 Public Sa- Safety Equipment Tax Anticipation Bonds for redemption.
I'll offer for consideration Resolution 2021-4.
Second.
Motion in second, and Randy Gates wants more, please.
This is simply the companion measure to the ordinance you just approved, this actually officially calls those bonds that we're refunding for payment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Granquist?
Yes.
Arnz?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Weeblehouse?
Yes.
Muren?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Claussen?
Yes.
Hildebrand?
Yes.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2021-4 is adopted.
That concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council, we are adjourned.